September 2nd, county council meeting to order. I will ask if everyone will please stand and Councilman Byers is going to lead us in an invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's pray. Gracious God, just thank you for the opportunity to gather together just as citizens and just to come together so that we can work for the betterment of our community. Lord, just thank you for a wonderful country that we live in and God, just thank you for all the blessings that you bestow upon us every day. Ask that you guide us and give us wisdom and discernment as we try to make decisions that make Dorchester County a great place to live, work, and play. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing on agenda tonight is adoption of minutes from the August 18th, 2025 council meeting. Is there a motion?
No.
Are a couple of motions and a second, any discussion? All in favor? We are unanimous. Next item on the agenda is, and I'm going to do a little bit of a switch, switching around here, I'm going to move this once on our agenda down to the bottom to allow some folks to get here. So, the next item on the agenda is adoption of the Dorchester County Council meeting for calendar year 2026.
So moved.
There is a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous. I'm going to have to try to go slower on this to try to... The next item on the agenda is public hearing concerning a funding application to be submitted to the South Carolina Department of Commerce Division of Grants Administration owner about September 15th, 2025 for a community development block grant under the Community Enrichment Program in the amount of $750,000 to implement a sidewalk installation project for phases one and two of the Dorchester Manor neighborhood. And I am going to start with Mr. Haver.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This application, you've seen this, I believe, last month in a preliminary form. We did submit this and the Department of Commerce has given us the green light to proceed with a final application. So, what we're looking to do is, under the Community Enrichment Program, there's $7 million statewide that we're going to be competing for and we are going to be applying for $750,000 in that funding round. Applications are due on the 15th of September. So, basically, again, this funding is targeted for the low and moderate income census tracts and in Dorchester County, our high priority census tract is the area that you see in red. It's a little hard to read, but it is down along Ashley Phosphate, off of Ashley Phosphate, Dorchester Manor area. The Dorchester Manor neighborhood is the subject of this application. Meeting with the residents in Dorchester Manor, we've identified, along with what's outlined in our community needs assessment, a standalone sidewalk project being the high priority project. And we had a number of meetings with the residents at their HOA meeting, you see the months that are listed there. All the input that we received from the residents were very positive. Upon consultation with Department of Commerce, we had to actually sample 160 homes within the entire development and that just shows you what's outlined in red there. There's 243 homes within the entire development. We had a knock on the doors of 160 of those homes. We gave the address list to the Department of Commerce and they actually chose which addresses we had to go visit. So, when we were all said and done, we were able to justify 74.6% of the folks meet the low and moderate income threshold. So, we definitely qualify for the program. So, the sidewalks, what we're looking to do, and this development was built in the late 70s, early 80s, it was approved without sidewalks. So, when we were meeting with the residents, they had indicated over the years, with the amount of cars that people are buying, just about every home has three to four cars, number of vehicles going up and down the street, there's a number of deliveries going in and out of the neighborhood. So, there's a lot of traffic on a 22-foot cartway. So, there is a easement on each side of the paved cartway of approximately 12 feet, which we are looking to put the sidewalk in that area. There is a curb, concrete curb and gutter, and then right behind the concrete curb and gutter, there is a mailbox. We're looking to keep a two-to-three-foot verge, grass strip, basically, and then put the sidewalk right behind there. The sidewalk will be five feet wide. So, that just gives you a typical cross-section of what that would look like. When we brought this before you last month, we actually had this project broken into four phases. Department of Commerce encouraged us to, in order to make this more, give a better appetite to them to fund this, they wanted this in two phases. So, what we did is married phase one and two into phase one and then three and four into phase two. So, that's what you see there. So, what we're going to be applying for, funding in all the green section. So, the roads that are being covered under this project, Dorchester Manor Boulevard, Pine Grove Drive, and Cypress Grove Drive, the green line that you see on the map shows where the sidewalks are being proposed. We're looking to only install sidewalk on one side of the street. The majority of it will be on the north side. So, Dorchester Manor Boulevard, Pine Grove will be on the north side. There is the lower section you'll see on Dorchester Manor Boulevard toward the bottom of your map is on the south side. And that was basically feel verified and the reason it's on those sides is because of the less conflicts that we have to deal with, with relocation of fences, trees, and other issues within the right-of-way. This gives you a description of the units and quantities for the project budget. When all said and done, there's 5,400, approximately linear feet of concrete for the sidewalk. There'll be 64 driveways that are impacted within that project area that will get corrected, get fixed, and there is six ADA ramps that will be installed. So, the total project is 1,050,000. We will be applying for 550,000 in the grant and the county match will be 300,000. So, eventually, if we do get approved, we'll be coming back to you for that resolution that we have to do every year to justify the matching funds and that'll be the 300,000. So, that'll be a combination of engineering, design cost, and a small amount of construction dollars. So, there again, the next step is to complete the grant application in the next about 10 days and get that filed by September 15th. So, you have any questions?
And I'm going to, I actually didn't do this one, but I want to open the public hearing. So, now that we've had any questions there for you, any questions from the audience, if there are, if you'll come forward and please state your name and address? None appearing, I will close the public hearing.
Make a motion, do we approve?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous. And I am, you know where we are? Okay. So, I'm going to jump around here again one little bit and move the employees here a little bit further out here and I'm going to go to a request to address council. The first, I'm going to ask if you come forward, you have three minutes and you'll give your name and address and again, please stick to that three minutes. First name on here is Mr. Mark Tanner.
Thank you. Good evening, council. So, my name's Mark Tanner. I live at 304 Huntington Road. I'm the president of the Sweet Fire Homeowners Association and I want to address the, we had a gravity-fed sewer system put in our neighborhood back in, it started earlier this year. But I started this project four and a half years ago with Larry, Mr. Larry Harper. Thank you, Larry, for your help in this project. When I started the project four and a half years ago, though, he said he had the desk set off because it was about seven years old and didn't work on this. It was converting 14 1970s homes to, from septic to county sewer. But what I'm addressing the council on is the connection fee from the time we started having the conversation was $3,500. It increased by 86% to $6,510 when I went to go to connect in. So, 14 homes were, had signed a petition to get this project started. 10 of those homeowners backed out when they saw, when they saw the price because of existing homeowner, it costs between $10,000 and $15,000 to dig and then the connect-in fee on top of that was another $6,510. So, what we ran into was homeowners that were existing homeowners had been here for all this time, paid all these taxes all these years, building or connecting in was going to run you about $20,000 out of your pocket in order to do that. Where we see the price disparity, like new developments, when we start that, it's easy to build that price into a new home and so you're running about 2% of the purchase price when you buy a new home in a new neighborhood with, say, a 500 subdivision home. Instead, with us, we have significantly higher burden. We had 10 homeowners that now declined the connection, which is, this is not a big revenue issue, but it's, it will decline the revenue coming into the county. The environmental benefits from a sewer system versus a leaching 50-year-old septic system have, there's a lot of benefits. So, we're going to not get those benefits from the, from what we had planned from the original 14 homes. So, what my request to the board is, is that we grandfathered the subdivision in at the 2023 rate of $3,500, which was the rate that was the price when we started the project. The infrastructure is already in place, it's already there, it just needs to be tapped into. Otherwise, we're going to end up with four homes connecting in instead of the 14 that we originally planned. And it actually would increase the participation and revenue by decreasing this and it would also get all the, those other 10 homes off of their 50-year-old septic systems that are leaching. You walk in these homes and walk in these backyards and you smell the sewer, I mean, you smell the septic, you smell, you walk in wet ground, it's just the septic system. We need to get them, get off of the septic and onto the more environmentally friendly sewer system. And so, I'd emailed the county council several times on this one, I just wanted to come to dress publicly, address the issue. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Tommy Fagan.
Good evening. Tommy Fagan, 111 Ponderosa Road, Somerville, South Carolina. Over the last couple of weeks, I've, we've experienced some pretty good flooding down in my neck of the woods, Mr. Hearns too, from what I understand, it's been pretty much underwater there in Pine Forest, pickup trucks getting washed off of Mallard Road, impervious surfaces. We keep building and building and building and the volume of water trying to get to our tributaries, streams, drainage, ditches, and rivers, the more water that runs off, you fill the wetlands, there's no place for it to lay and evaporate or be absorbed by the ground and the, the, you know, we need to look a lot more closely at filling the wetlands and building on them, you know, everywhere, because the wetlands is where all this water goes. If you take a square mile, even if it's just four inches deep, just think how much water that is. And you keep building and we keep building and building and building, all of these areas, they haul in filled dirt, they put in roads, driveways, houses with the roofs, none of it accepts water, it all has to run off. It can't get out to where it needs to go. Please look at that. And looking at what I spoke on at the last council meeting, the rezoning request 5B on this, on today's, to R2M, we got 10.53 acres that's being rezoned and that rezoning is for 10.53 acres for one house. Why are we rezoning 10 acres? He decides he's going to flip this to some big-money developer, they've already got R2M zoning on 10.53 acres. Why wasn't it TRM so he could put a trailer on it and live there? Or why wasn't it made smaller for where he wants to do it? What kind of guarantee do we have that it's not going to be flipped and a trailer park go in there? Just questions that I'd like to have some answers to if we could. And where could I get a copy of the lease contract for the new building that's being built there at 78 and Main Street? A three-story office building, I'm sure there's got to be some numbers on renting that and how long? And I think it's 40,000 square feet. And, you know, that's got to be pretty expensive, even at, what, $15, $12, $15 a square foot over a 40-year period for 40,000 square feet and that's super cheap, probably less than half. That's going to be $20 million over-
Thank you, sir.
-a 40-year period. Just please look at things in context. Thank you.
Last but not least, certainly, Mr. Adrian Kane.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of council. Thank you all. My name is Adrian Kane, I'm the CEO of the Charleston Hilton Head Home Builders Associations. I also happen to own a couple hundred acres with my parents on 279 Seven Acres Road here in St. George. I understand the unique balance that you all have in front of you and as the gentleman just shared, the balance of our quality life, how we manage water, how we put forth smart policy. Over the last few weeks, staff, council members, and engineers from across this region sat down to put forth a series of changes, the amendment to the third reading that you hear this evening. We had hydrology experts, civil engineers, watershed experts to take a look at how we thoughtfully and intentionally design systems to ensure we grow the right way, to also ensure that we're thoughtful about our infrastructure, roads, our schools, and those things being built in the floodplain so that we're, so that we're sure compensatory storage is done the right way and in the most thoughtful way. It'd be very easy to pave paradise. We have an obligation to strike a balance. Just the other day, and I'll give the chairman credit for this, as part of the thought process, we talked about a comprehensive watershed study. I've met with members of our state and federal delegation already to source funding, to look at a comprehensive plan. We know water doesn't care where it flows, from Berkeley County to Dorchester and to Charleston County. We need a comprehensive approach that allows us to understand the watershed that feeds into all these systems so that we can go forth and make better decision-making. I urge council to pass the proposed changes this evening so that we have a plan to move forward over the next coming years. What an interesting idea that the home builders in Dorchester County would work together to find a common sense, science-based solution to how we grow in the future. I'm not sure that I could have stood here in front of this council last year and said that statement, but I think tonight we have an opportunity to strike a balance, to do it the right way. The 200 acres I own with my parents in St. George, I intend to protect in perpetuity through a conservation easement because it's the ethos in which I was raised and we need to afford that opportunity while also balancing the challenge that our children and grandchildren are being raised in a community where they oftentimes cannot afford to buy a home where they're being raised. We have a housing crisis, we have a conservation crisis. Together, we can make common sense solutions like the proposed changes you have in front of you that afford us an opportunity for a pathway forward. Thank you all for what you do. I know it's a balancing act and it's not always easy. I urge you to pass the proposed changes that have been put in front of you in the third reading and I look forward to working with you in the coming years ahead. Thank you, council.
Thank you. I'm going to, I'll, I'll, I'll ask you. So, Mr. Ward is not feeling, was not feeling well this morning and so I, I sent him home and so, timing is everything. Next item on the agenda is a presentation of 2025 Second Quarter Employee of the Quarter Awards to Mr. Jermaine Stitt, Senior IT Technician and First Responder of the Quarter Award to Ms. Brianna DeBois, Paramedic Crew Chief. And I'm going to, if you will meet me up front, Mr. Stitt, and then we will get Ms. DeBois. Come on up.
Jermaine Stitt consistently provides excellent assistance to offices concerning IT-related needs. Recently, Jermaine provided invaluable assistance during an office relocation process that went well beyond the scope of his responsibilities. Without hesitation, he stepped in to help move desks and other items, always with a positive attitude and a willingness to contribute wherever needed. What stands out the most is Jermaine's mindset. Never once did he say, "This isn't my job." Instead, he proactively offered assistance and approached every task with teamwork and dedication. This level of initiative and support exemplifies the collaborative spirit and commitment to excellence that we strive for within the county. Congratulations, Jermaine.
Let's, let's, I'm going to get counsel, we're going to go down here, we're going to come down and meet you down there. He's also got good taste in music.
Congratulations.
Thank you for attending.
I got to sit next to Jermaine at a Styx John Waite foreigner concert.
Not here? No? Not here?
I'm here.
Okay. I saw y'all here, so I figured.
All right.
Look at there. Come on, come on up. You come in late, you got to stand at the front.
Where am I sitting?
Stand right there, stand right there, turn around, turn around, look at your adoring public.
For nearly seven years, Brianna has been an invaluable and steadfast member of the Dorchester County EMS team, progressing from EMT to Paramedic Crew Chief, where she serves as a field training officer. Brianna consistently exemplifies professionalism and unwavering reliability. In recent months, Brianna has been a key contributor in numerous critical calls demonstrating exceptional attention to detail and a profound passion for her work, leading to remarkable patient outcomes. Beyond her clinical excellence, Brianna is a natural educator, skillfully guiding and shaping new and developing providers. Her mentorship fosters growth, equipping them to become highly capable and dedicated emergency medical professionals embodying the highest standards of Dorchester County EMS. Congratulations, Brianna.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thanks for taking care of our people.
Yeah.
Congratulations. Thanks for watching. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thanks for waiting on me.
Thank you very much and these are the folks that you don't know how bad you need till you need them, so thank you.
Amen.
You can't go anywhere.
We're going to have EMS, we're going to have EMS.
You got to hold that.
Good job.
I don't know about that.
Absolutely.
Oh, we're going to get one with our colleague, I'm sorry.
Now's the time to have some computer issues. We got everybody here.
Nice try, nice try.
Throw people in the front.
Next item on the agenda is correspondence.
Mr. Chairman and council, all items of correspondence have been shared with council.
So, I know the next item on the agenda is, I know Mr. Russo is not here. James, there's James right there. So, Dorchester County, Jason Russo is the chairman of the Dorchester County Accommodations Tax Committee and he cannot be here tonight, so, but it is a request for approval of the Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee Recommendation for Funding Allocation for Fiscal Year 24-25 and James O. is going to, I'm still going to do that one. James O. is going to give us that presentation.
Chairman Chenas, members of council, good evening. I'm here to present the Accommodations Tax Funding Recommendation on behalf of the Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee Chairman, Mr. Jason Russo, who couldn't make it here today. And in my capacity as the secretary, I would do that presentation. The committee had $209,409.55 to allocate under the 65% earmarked for tourism-related expenditures. And on August 14, 2025, the committee had their annual meeting to hear the applicants and make recommendations for funding based on the requests submitted. 18 organizations applied and the committee recommended the applicants be funded at the amounts listed on the Accommodations Tax worksheet that are included in your packets. Also included in that worksheet, in that packet, are the minutes of that meeting and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Any questions? No questions? Do we have a motion?
I make a motion, I'd like to make a motion to table this to the next meeting till we get a little bit deeper into the, what the donations are and what the organizations are.
So, you want to post, you want a motion to postpone?
Postpone it to the next meeting.
The next meeting.
Second.
So, there is a motion and a second to postpone to the second meeting. Any discussion?
Is there any type of timeframe that we're under to be able to make some sort of state statute with expenditure, these funds or allocation of these funds?
Mr. Byers, I will answer that for you because that got answered earlier tonight. Actually, I'm going to ask Ms. Christmas if she'll answer that, so she'll do it better than I will. She's the one that gave me the answer, so.
Okay.
So, normally, as history shows in the county, we have awarded these funds in September, the first meeting of September, and the checks were written to the prior fiscal year. So, the checks have always been written out of the, like this year it would be fiscal year 25, where we're doing our hard close on fiscal year 25 next week. So, this money will roll into 2026 and the funds will be available for distribution in fiscal year 26, seeing as a decision wouldn't be made tonight. It wouldn't affect the, it wouldn't affect anything, just it'll be paid out of a different fiscal year.
There's no state statute that says these need to be done by September 15th or something like that?
Says, no. But state does call that the funds, once awarded, that they're spent within two years.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Next item on the agenda is county administrators' time and we have the-
Article 1, Sections 18-11, words and terms defined, and Article 3, provisions for flood hazard reduction, to add new Section 18-5211, compensatory storage required for fill. The purpose of this amendment is to establish a compensatory storage requirement to offset the use of fill within the flood plain.
So is there, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. I wanna make sure, are we about to vote on the original document or the amended document?
I'm gonna, I'm sorry, you were faster than I was, and I'm gonna start the discussion if I can, that may help a little bit there. I'm gonna ask Ms., our Public Works Director, Ms. Sunshine Trakis, to come up and give us, they worked on this at length, and I wanna make sure she gives us her blessing on this as we go forward, so, gives us the ideas that we can look at.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of council. As you all heard from Mr. Kane at a public hearing earlier this evening, the compensatory storage ordinance following the August 18 public hearing and second reading, we received some proposed revisions from the engineering community that they asked to be considered as part of this ordinance. So during, for the past two weeks, we staffed from the various affected departments, reviewed the proposed revisions, and we had a number of meetings and discussions with the engineering community regarding their comments. And so we have provided for you all tonight as red lines in your packets, the proposed ordinance with revisions based on really these collaborative discussions between staff and members of the engineering community. And I went ahead and kinda pulled them each one by one, so we can go through each of those pretty quickly, and then I can answer any questions you all may have regarding them. So the first revision was to the recitals, and we here just added a reference to the comprehensive plan, just to reinforce Dorchester County's goal, one of their goals of initiating environmental and resource protection programs. Another revision we have is to the words and terms that were defined. I won't go through each of them, but basically adding some terms that, just to provide some clarity to some of the common terms that are used throughout the ordinance. This is kinda the meat and potatoes of the ordinance, Section 185211, and I'll go through these. I think there were 10 of them. But this first one, item number one, is basically language that was added to ensure the functional effectiveness of the ordinance. We will require detailed hydraulic modeling to demonstrate the compensatory storage ordinance requirements are met. And also adding language to align with FEMA regulations to allow small sites that have minimal fill to not have to provide those detailed engineering analyses. For item number two, this one was adding language to provide some clarification and just prevent some misinterpretation. Item number three, this language is presented to allow for the use of BMP storage volume beyond the design storm event, so that we, to be able to utilize that for compensatory storage, it is subject to county approval, and it must be clearly demonstrated through some hydraulic modeling and engineering analysis. Item number four, this is language to expand field surveys, to allow for state standard surveying practices to be utilized, and also align the language with FEMA guidelines and clarify that the revised base flood elevations must use the pre-project conditions as the baseline for comparison. For item number five, this is to provide some practical flexibility for site-specific and green infrastructure, and to maintain some long-term functionality and avoiding ponding issues by not allowing the volume under the high-water table to be utilized. For item number six, this language is to provide clarification and require a geotechnical study to verify that seasonal high-water table. For item number seven, this is language to provide some practical flexibility and to clarify that the compensatory storage area requirement is to maintain the storage volume during the 100-year storm event. Item number eight is language that was added to provide clarification and consistency with our stormwater BMP exclusions. Item number nine is revised language to ensure that the long-term enforceability of our requirements while allowing distinctions between public and private projects and ownership of property. Number 10 is language that was added to define and provide flexibility for critical public facilities and infrastructure projects. And lastly, item number 11 was language that was added to reinforce the floodplain manager's role and to cover all those items that fall within the approved FEMA standards. So that's just a brief overview of those, but if there are any specific questions.
So do you have any other questions, comments, please? Mr. Har.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate, you know, the fact that we were able to have that meeting and get input from the engineers. And, Mr. Chairman, occasionally, and I've done this over my 25 years, sometimes I'll ask a question really where the discussion's directed after that fourth wall, particularly since, you know, we've got folks on YouTube, but I'm curious, just feedback from those here. Where do those engineers who have given input, where do they come down on these revisions? What's the feedback on this? You know, I've read it, and I'm sure like me, like others, have gotten some wildly varying opinions of this, one side to the other. I mean, honestly, some of the folks that were very upset about this, I was wondering if they have even seen these amendments, quite honestly. And I just, I didn't know if anybody wanted to comment on that, so, thank you.
So the proposed revisions are ones that we've gone back and forth on, and then they've also reviewed them and seen them. But a lot of the, their comments and feedback, I think, was based on how it was more vague, which provide, you know, it wasn't very clear. And so for the engineers who have to design and demonstrate that, it made it very difficult, or sometimes you have sites that are, you know, very, they've seen a lot more sites out there that may require more creativity and innovation to meet those requirements. So this language in here allows for that, while also making sure that the county can ensure that our properties and residences are protected.
Okay. And we've, at least in part, modeled this against some other jurisdictions, and just where, you know, how do we feel this stands up against the jurisdictions, and is it compatible, you think, with our neighboring jurisdictions?
Yeah, so they did provide language to that other counties across the state have used. They're kinda picking, you know, the language that was, the good things that we found from the other ordinances were kinda put into ours.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Har, if I might, one of the things that I learned in this is, we did model this after one of the municipalities here in Dorchester County, and apparently, they went back and looked at theirs and realized that there's some challenges in implementing theirs, actually. So they may actually go back, even though we may have initially modeled it after theirs, they may have to come back and look at how we've specified. There were certain things that, obviously, those of us in that meeting looked and had the conversation about, that we looked at that and said, "Oh, no, we, when you do a field survey, you can do a field survey with whatever acceptable equipment's there." That specified a little bit in more detail than what we had in there to begin with, because their assumption was we meant a physical going out there, boots-on-the-ground measuring, instead of using things like drones and everything else that are used today. So I think there was some of that element, that we simply put more clarification in to ensure that that was allowed, not to make that assumption that it was allowed.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Don't really have a question, Mr. Chairman, but thank you, Sunshine Keira, for all the work. Mr. Chairman, you were in the meeting with myself and Mr. Frittel, and I thought it went really well. There was a lot of great feedback. Appreciate the comments from Mr. Kane. It was nice to be able to actually improve a document and get the private sector to come in and help us really tighten things up and be able to work together as a team. I really appreciate that, because I think it's important. This is a very important document. I mean, we've got to do these things to be able to protect from flooding that we are seeing more of. This is one of those documents that's really gonna move us ahead, and I think we're moving ahead of other counties, and we're ahead of things. But also, out of this, one of the things we talked about, and it's, maybe it's appropriate to put on the agenda for next session, but I would like for us to really encourage our staff to go ahead and start working with the other counties and COG, as well as their state and federal leaders, to get a watershed study done for the Low Country. A lot of people don't realize that we get a lot of water from Berkeley County that comes over into our county, and so we don't know what their studies are saying, and this is something that we need to do comprehensively. And so I would like for us to really, to lead on that. Appreciate Mr. Kane and the home builders talking about that, and I think we've got a lot of buy-in that can make that happen, but this is really a step in the right direction to being able to make sure that we're mitigating the flooding issues that we're starting to have. Thank you.
Mr. Byers, if I might, I missed an executive board meeting for the COG, and so they elected me one of the officers, unfortunately. So I will, that is on my list to bring up to Ron and the folks at the COG next time, to look at that regional watershed study and the critical nature that that entails with everything that the COG does. Typically, we look at roads when we think about the COG, and nothing but roads. But that opportunity to look at how those roads impact that watershed is critical. I know everyone has got a copy. We also received a letter from a constituent, I think he's a constituent, that if you read it and went through that, it goes outside of, this is a flood control ordinance, this is not somewhere else, this is specifically in flood control, and talking about some of the other elements in here doesn't actually fit in the flood control. And I had responded to him, basically, that this, you know, this was a flood control, a flood management, I think is the right, controlled is the wrong word, but a flood management ordinance, a revision, a clarification, a further detail of what we wanna do. Some of the other elements he talks about, we actually are trying to do, but they're in different sections of our codes. So our green belt is a perfect example of some of those items that he's talking about. So, any other?
All I'd like to say, Mr. Chairman, is it was interesting to be in that meeting with the engineers, that were actually understanding the complexity of what we were dealing with and understood with compassion, and were willing to help us out on this, and the fact that everybody agreed that the comprehensive watershed study has to be done. It's something that the three counties have got to do together. This is not just a Dorchester County issue, it is a tri-county issue. And has there ever been one done? I don't think so. And that's why it's past time for this to happen. And I appreciate staff working on that.
So the next one I have, based on the recommendations, we had given second reading to an ordinance, so if there's no further discussion, I would entertain a motion to amend ordinance 2515 on the red line version as provided to counsel earlier today and discussed by Ms. Trakis tonight.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion on the amendment? I think we probably had that at this point. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we move the amendment. Now, I wanna vote on the main motion as amended, third reading on the main motion as amended. Any discussion? All in favor? We are unanimous. Thank y'all.
That calls for, that calls for celebration.
Mr. Formesano.
The next time I, the next item I have for your consideration is Third Reading Regarding Rezoning Request Number 932 for Ephraim Camarillo to rezone 10.53 acres located on Ankrum Lane near Somerville, TMS number 152-00-00-049, from Suburban Residential District SR to Single Family Residential Manufactured Housing District R2M.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I wanted to ask a question. Isn't the reason that he's applying for this rezoning is because there's only room for one mobile home on that property due to wetlands?
That would be correct. Absolutely. And in addition to that, I think, and I'm gonna look at Ms. Reinerson when I say this, but it's ultimately also appropriate based on the surrounding properties being zoned in the same manner. So there are zoning ordinances that encompass all of this, and staff does a really good job at looking at all of those possibilities. It's not just a random, we're gonna do this just because, so, in spite of what may be said. Any other discussion? All in favor? We are unanimous.
The next item I have for your consideration is Third Reading Regarding Rezoning Request Number 933 from Charles Altman to rezone 33.94 acres located on Highway 178 near St. George, TMS number 007-00-00-069, from General Commercial District CG to Commercial Light Industrial District CLI. Ask for third and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
All in favor? We are unanimous.
The next item I have for your consideration is First Reading and Referral to the PDB for a Public Hearing and Recommendation Regarding Rezoning Request Number 934 for Elliot Locklear to rezone 1.83 acres located on Ladson Road near Somerville, TMS number 154-10-13-001 through 005 and 028 through 038. 154-14-07-011 through 015 and 023 through 033 from General Commercial District CG to Single Family Attached Residential District R3. And this applicant is requesting rezoning from General Commercial District to Single Family Attached District for the purposes of developing townhomes. Planning Commission reviewed this request and recommended approval, and staff at planning and zoning level also recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, so I have one element of discussion in this one, only when you look at this plat, clearly, general commercial was nearly impossible in the manner that it is platted. I would like to see, at least at the PDB level, to have the property owner or the, Mr. Locklear, present to us that potential replating of this property to make it appropriate to what he's suggesting in there, so that at least we have that plat potential in front of us, not something random. All in favor? We are unanimous.
The next item I have for your consideration is First Reading and Referral to the PDB for a Public Hearing and Recommendation Regarding Rezoning Request Number 935 by Eric Stem to rezone .82 acres located at 114 and 111 Cone Lane near Somerville, TMS number 135-16-00-27 and 135-16-00-006 from Office and Institutional District OI to Single Family Residential Manufactured Housing District R1M. This rezoning request is being requested to allow manufactured homes to be placed on the properties. Both Planning Commission and Planning and Zoning Staff recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, so I have one element of discussion in this one, only when you look at this plat, clearly, general commercial was nearly impossible in the manner that it is platted. I would like to see, at least at the PDB level, to have the property owner or the, Mr. Locklear, present to us that potential replating of this property to make it appropriate to what he's suggesting in there, so that at least we have that plat potential in front of us, not something random. All in favor? We are unanimous.
The next item I have for your consideration is First Reading and Referral to the PDB for a Public Hearing and Recommendation Regarding Rezoning Request Number 935 by Eric Stem to rezone .82 acres located at 114 and 111 Cone Lane near Somerville, TMS number 135-16-00-27 and 135-16-00-006 from Office and Institutional District OI to Single Family Residential Manufactured Housing District R1M. This rezoning request is being requested to allow manufactured homes to be placed on the properties. Both Planning Commission and Planning and Zoning Staff recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? I'm gonna add to that one as well, having looked at this one. If you go back and look at that, if you drive down there, you will realize it's interesting. This probably was rezoned at some point in time when we did one of the group rezonings. We may have inadvertently rezoned this out of what it had been being used as at that point in time. There exist, and one of the properties are rather dilapidated, but nonetheless, there's already a mobile home on one of those properties. All in favor? We are unanimous.
The next item I have for your consideration is First Reading and Referral to the PDB for a Public Hearing and Recommendation Regarding Rezoning Request Number 937 by Greg Minton to rezone 3.75 acres located at Myers Mayo Road and Highway 78 near Ridgeville, TMS number 098-00-00-192 and 098-00-00-296 from Agricultural Residential District AR to General Commercial District CG. And this will allow the applicant to develop a gas station on the properties. Both Planning Commission and Planning and Zoning Staff recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor? We are unanimous.
The next item I have for your consideration is a request for approval of the fiscal year 2025 carryover budget, and this will allow us 2025 carryover budget, and this will allow us to complete ongoing projects and purchases that were not completed by the end of fiscal year 25 as recommended.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? We are unanimous.
The final item I have for your consideration is a request for approval of the fiscal year 2026-2027 budget calendar. And please also take note that, please take note of the budget retreat dates in 2026, April 9th, May 7th, and June 4th.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second.
And that was not the final item.
I'm sorry.
The final, final item.
You got to move first. You got, I got to ask if they'll approve that budget calendar, so.
It was in the zone.
You're fine. Any discussion on the budget calendar, not on the final, final item? All in favor? We are unanimous. It's all yours.
Okay. The final item I have for your consideration, and I promise, is a request of approval of a memorandum of understanding between Dorchester County Library and the Friends of Dorchester County Public Libraries. And this is a nonprofit organization that works to secure funds and support of libraries and their mission.
So moved.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Just a quick question, Mr. Chairman. Does this, Mr. Foreman, you may or may not know, we don't have the executive director for the library in here, but also with the Somerville or any additional libraries in the county, or exclusively the partnership is to attract grant funding specifically for all libraries, correct?
Well, this specific MOU is between the Dorchester County Library System and Friends.
So that includes Somerville or any of them?
Any of the private, you know, privately owned libraries, is my understanding. Yes, sir?
Just making sure. Just thank for the clarification.
Any other discussion? All in favor? We are unanimous. Next item on the agenda is appointments to boards and commissions. Do we have any appointments to boards and commissions? We're getting very close to actually having them all appointed before the year's out, so.
The Holy Grail.
We're getting there. The next item on the agenda is county attorney's time. Mr. Frampton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I'd request adoption of resolution 25-13, which is a resolution of county council approving the assessment rolls for the Summers Corner Improvement District as adopted by county council in ordinance 17-05 pursuant Title IV, Chapter 35, Code of Law of South Bonna, 1976, as amended. So, this resolution would adopt or approve the assessment rolls A and B. There is no assessment rule B because there are no recreational facilities maintained by the county or owned by the county out there. This would be the assessment rolls for the capital improvements that have been conveyed to the county.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? We are unanimous.
Next, Mr. Chairman, I'd request authorization for the use of eminent domain should negotiations between property owners and the county fail for certain TMS numbers involving the Connolly-Haines Road project. Those TMS numbers being 058, 0000, 175, 035, and 034. Request authorization for the use of eminent domain if necessary.
So moved.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? We are unanimous.
Next, Mr. Chairman, I'd request executive session to receive legal advice regarding the EOC pending litigation and also acceptance by the county of public dedication of Wise Road, also known as Wise Lane, into the county's public maintenance system. I request executive session on those two items.
So moved.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? We are in executive session. Folks, if you are going to hang out, you're invited to. If you are leaving, please drive safely. Thank you all.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Executive session, council discussed the two previously announced items, but no action was taken.
Do we have any motions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hearn.
Thank you. I move that the county accept into its road maintenance system the dedicated 50-foot right-of-way of Wise Road, also known as Wise Lane, beginning at its intersection with Weir Lane and running westerly to its terminus at TMS number 1340000039.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous. Do we have any other motions?